This is not very item.
Alright. We're good. The fashion is in his work.
Unfortunately, one of these are on technology.
Yeah, right, exactly.
The meeting in October spell we're on to. What what is?
Where where are you at?
Good man. What was your son?
Maybe not anywhere.
And what do I spell wrong?
Yeah.
How did I spell it wrong?
Where are you at? What's one more?
H.
Oh, I fixed it. Well, it should be you have litigation now. It should be settlement agreement.
Government change that settlement agreement. All. Okay.
I was gonna say I probably spelled litigation court.
Yeah, but it wasn't really. We didn't, we weren't at that stage yet.
Little valley school. Just one separate.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I wouldn't do that.
So we're gonna go. Alright, it's five thirty of order. Can we stay for the pleasure we landed down?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Salamaca City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Wacca, the people of the great hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaca School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples in their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaca City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Alright, everybody. I'm Kiri John, Vice President of the School Board, filling in for President Teresa Ray, who had unexpected appointments could be here tonight. So to start off with, we're looking at the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are four changes to the agenda. We added the strategic planning PowerPoint, which you will see shortly. We also added item four A, which is an executive session that will occur after the presentations. We added seven G, which are donations from Seneca Gaming and Entertainment and the Seneca Nation Tribal Council for the Cindy Moore Five Day. And we added item nine H, which is a settlement agreements.
Okay. Alright, can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Ted. Do we have any questions? Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Any polls, any abstained? Alright, motion carried. Alright, we're moving on to recognitions and presentations. Item A, presentation on leaders team.
Alright, I am very excited to introduce several students who, this is a bit unusual for us actually, because usually the students are led by a particular teacher or staff member. But this is a proposal that originated essentially from the leaders at Seneca Intermediate. And guess I'll just turn it over to them. Ms. Morrison is the leader there of this group, but this really originated, am I right? From them, specifically Morgan Palmer. And we're excited to hear what they have to say.
This is our fourth, second, and third leaders team. And today we'd like to propose something to you all. Actually, until I can.
Come on in. Hi, Liam.
Yeah.
They not only me, but some of our leaders will be consulting a presentation for an eighth grade leaders. Well, our mission, our mission is to bring forth through seventh grade leaders program to Salamaca High School, which the leaders program has had a positive impact on our students. Then expanding it to the high school would allow them to build on the skill and the leadership that we developed. The hope on seventh grade leaders must thrive and grow. Already members must have a strong desire to continue to create a high school. We present you need to show you a breakdown how many people want to continue the program in high school and drive you to start benefiting creation of a new community leaders team. These ideas manifest through knocking of others and demonstrate how important it is to be a leader. We call, we call their leaders to attend enthusiastic children who are eager to continue the program eight three. During interviews, they share inspiring ideas that would shape the eighth grade leaders program. Charlie Woodman. Well, I think especially me, one of them for others, if we see the nation's involvement, providing more for the whole world. This showcase the profound impact of our leaders, which has clearly broadened the young's perspective on everything. Where even to be a part of something bigger and learn how to make meaningful things is truly remarkable. And it is exciting to think about the potential to have to make a lasting impact. Our fifth grade leader, the different leaders team since the seventh enthusiastic kid willing to continue on to a capable leaders program. This team has suggested some exciting idea such as. Alco State or Joshua, the representative of Salma High School of the older. We're gonna have a state park cleanup at Halloween same for our children. Eighth grade leaders continue to continue the mouse and let children understand which project from the inside of the door. This experience is not only growing their horizons, but also provide opportunities for growth and leadership development, having the goal being for students to roughly dance sounding. Our sixth grade leader, the sixth grade leaders team is alive and good. With twelve of whom we asked to join the eighth grade leaders program. They propose some exciting initiative. At the end of the afternoon, heavy work relation for every student, for every student in grades fourth and seventh, I'm starting to find this work. For directly organizing numerous courses. Carry out full drive. To drive to support thirty three. There's no way there's some moments to read stories through that, not only reading those stories, but collecting various words from your time. More about that topic on. These activities will not only help to give back to others and me, but also let others hear about the leaders program, possibly helping to inspire other schools to better program as well. When this leaders team went to only a team to present, they were shocked by how well behaved the group was. They increased the group and Ms. Morrison saw her hard work into the program. They had said that being a never heard of such a program, it was an honor to work with such a great representatives of the Seneca Intermediate leaders. For a collaborative project, it takes seven things leaders team where it can be something special by living in the university home to share stories with elders and in return, listen to and record your elders own story. The leaders will let written notes or record these stories with the goal of compiling them into a book that preserves the elders' experiences and lessons. By doing so, they aim to prevent the loss of these valuable stories when the elderly pass on. Publishing the book potentially in newspapers would serve as a meaningful way to keep the elders' memories and sort of life. Allow these generations to revive and honor their legacy.
Our seventh year leaders. Our seventh grade leaders team consists of eight overthinking individuals who are eager to make the dream of the eighth grade leaders program a reality. These leaders have consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership skills, serving as role models whenever, wherever they present. They had even taken on the important role of tour guides for our transition day, giving third graders a glimpse into their future at Seneca Intermediate. By sharing their experiences and passion, they are inspiring younger minds to consider joining the program when they come for center. As seventh graders, they're incredibly proud that we are part of this program and to be leaders, embodying the spirit of mentorship.
The important topic to address. Everyone in the leaders program adores Ms. Morrison. And when she mentioned if the eighth grade leaders program they accepted, she might not be directing it. And when the team found out they were. We want to emphasize that Ms. Morrison is so essential to the success of any leaders program, as she has had a profound impact on shaping tomorrow's leaders. She's done an exceptional, she has been an exceptional mentor, role model, and leader who has done an outstanding job guiding the program over the years. We're hopeful to continue to be a part of our journey and we kindly request that her involvement is taken into consideration. Since Morrison's dedication and leadership has made a lasting impact and we're grateful for her influence. We don't want her involvement to end and we hope you understand that she's valued and beloved within our program. In conclusion, the leaders program has had a profound impact on students across grades four through sevens, even our past leaders. Foster the sun of community and leadership and social responsibility. As these students look to transition to Salamaca High School, they're eager to continue this journey through an eighth grade leaders program with Ms. Morrison's guidance and expertise. The program has flourished and we're confident that it will continue to thrive with us. We believe that expanding the leaders program to include eighth grade will not only benefit our students, but also broaden the communities. And we kindly request that you consider our commitment. We're excited about the potential for growth, leadership, and development and positive impact that this program can bring. And we're hopeful that you join us in making this a reality.
Appreciate everything you guys are doing and also Ms. Morrison. Great job, you're making an impact. I would support this for sure. One thing I wanted to mention while I'm thinking about the eighth grade leaders team. We just had our capital project approved, which potentially in a few years, we may be moving eighth grade back down into the middle table and along with fourth grade over to prospect. Right, so it might even affect even the guy or a couple of years, but there's no reason why I couldn't set the program down. I think it's a great idea. I'd be fully supportive of it, but I think we're gonna have to find some help with Ms. Morrison.
So we also have one thing added to our agenda, which is something from our Cornell cooperative extension. This was one of our futures this past week. And they, we had talked to them about our leaders program and what it was. So they decided both things like a recommendation, if you would like to give us a recommendation. And we would like to leave some of the two highlights from that, that would be alright to do that.
Absolutely. We're not gonna say no. You're doing a terrific job. And just occasionally get any little bit of support. I don't mean to talk over you, but we get, have presentations from adults, nothing against our adults, that are half as good as the job you're doing right now. So keep rolling with it. You're doing terrific.
Basically, the leaders team received a letter of support from Cornell Cooperative Extension and we would like to leave some of our highlights. When our cooperative is standing, four is in youth development, programming to the four age, the after school programs throughout the script. These programs are designed to help children with skills to be taught and learn life skills and foster a sense of belonging in the community. The Salamaca Center, we are doing this for your team. These students have many different interests and backgrounds, something a lot of play wants and speak up for their beliefs and ways of perpetual and self. The line to this group have helped students to build relationships and backgrounds in your, your behaviors. And that is impressive and necessary for our education. Student leaders from grades three through seven have attended sessions at Cornell Cooperative Extension and Elementary and explored topics of leadership in agriculture, fore culture, so safe kitchen skills, learning all food and including adding additions, creating problem solving and steam projects and learning to recognize personal leadership story. Students who have this feeling in new leadership, their teams have proposed to be polite and creative. They ask smart questions and they support each other during activities. Mrs. Morrison knows these students well, who are really here, using censorship ship and can always help them remember why the individuals get out of leaders amount working more for a student, understand the power of working, working on the team and working to win the talent to better. To wrap up this session. Grab the support from Cornell Squad and Sessions. They are hopeful that Salma will consider sending the leadership team to additional grades.
Anybody here?
I'm pretty speechless, to be honest, but I didn't wanna say great job to you and you can see how much everybody looks up to you, each and every one of you guys. You're doing a great job, you're a great role model, all of you guys. Whether you're in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade, it doesn't matter. Each one of you are leading by example for the people, the students coming up behind you. So I fully support this and I want to say congratulations and great job.
I have one down that. My name is Sullivan Sludge Welcome. I'm a fifth grader. I've been in the leaders group since third grade. Leaders has helped me succeed in school. It has supported me in keeping up my grades and encouraged me to show good behavior every day. I hope the leaders program continues in high school, so I can keep helping students like me grow and stay on the right path. Thank you all for being here and listening to our voices on why leaders should continue to the high school.
Now, I understand the council reporter would also like to add on. Do you get grant her permission to add on to your presentation here?
Thank you. I would like to speak about the leaders program. Third grade, they did two large council chambers last week. We had probably twelve students coming by Ms. Morrison. And I shouldn't tell you what a thoughtful group of young people that entered the council chambers. And for them, we allowed them to come in, they formed lines, they sat in our chairs. And we explained what Seneca Nation counselors do. And some of them got too soon late over here. And one of them, he came into the council chair and. New. Jason, yeah, Jason was there as well. And it was really just a delightful afternoon or good morning for all of us to be able to witness them and see their development and their confidence. They were, they were smart, they were curious. They did a lot of really amazing things that just were a little bright spot in my day. And however you can support this initiative and advance it through the grades and also have an opportunity for other students to join in to the cohorts. Because I would imagine that you have one cohort that would move through the whole school system and maybe they're, they're considered, you know, they're survivors, but you know, for all that, that time as, as others might integrate into that. So I think it's wonderful. I stand here with my, my dear cousin Morgan. She's, she's pretty special and I'm really glad she's here to give this presentation and to share, have you share all of your ideas as well. So thank you. It's, it's really a great opportunity. I think it's a nice way to blend the school coming into the Seneca Nation to get to two of the treasurer's office and clerk's office and everywhere else. So very, very wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And all some of our past students. There, I don't mean to put you back on the spot, but these are some of the supporters who have came to show up today. And I have met with some, some of them are family, some of them I've met you all. And I am very thankful that they use the company's support and pass here. And also, Miss, thank you for showing.
Some presentation, I guess, you've heard from a couple of us and we're definitely going to support this. Anything we can do, and it's all along the kids, anything we can do to help you get, they help you be successful in your futures. That's what we're here for. So we'll definitely be talking about this. Yep. As a matter of fact, we have an executive session coming up. We're.
That we do. And Morgan, I will be following you in the next couple of days to maybe put out a plan because I have a feeling that next year you'll be coming to us looking for ninth grade. So I, I'm already a year ahead. Totally understand, but awesome job. Terrific. Should be very proud of yourselves. And to the parents that are here, this usually just doesn't happen. So it starts at home. Last night I said the first teacher are the parents. And congratulations, because if you have a, a son or daughter or a relative or loved one down here, well done.
Thank you. Thank you all.
One more.
Thank you all. So I feel bad for who is coming up next. Yeah. No kidding. How do you follow that? Wow. Alright, so next up on the agenda, we have a presentation of our strategic planning update and.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you. You guys are a great job, thank you.
I don't usually get nervous, but now I'm actually nervous after that. I'm gonna be thinking about my speech, my distractor words, because they, they nailed it. Wow.
So, uh, let's see. For the past several months, we've undertaken a process to develop a new path for the next five years. That path is in the form of a strategic plan. So this goes back to September, October, when Mrs. Bigara put out an RFP, which is a request for proposals to a variety of organizations to help guide us through this process. So right around November, I'll probably Google to a first, these first couple of clients kind of quickly. Around November, December, we received the proposals, then interviewed several of them. The group settled on HYA, which is Hazard, Yon, and Pia. They had a significant amount of experience in the painting sector. And they had a sort of four phase process. And I know that they have come and presented, so some of this I'll go through as a reminder. And those are the four phases that you see right there. Phase one and two took place, let's see, December, January, February, March. Phase three was when we had several individuals together and we'll go through who those were to actually gather the data, analyze the data and evaluate where we are and where we want to be. And then phase four is actually the implementation phase. But prior to that, we want to make sure the board is all on the same page and get their approval to begin an action step plan going forward. So this is sort of their process. At the bottom, as with any good decision making, we start with data. We then took that data and you'll see specifically what that is in a moment. And we evaluated our values as a district, the mission that we have, as well as the figure. We then took the values, mission, and vision, identified specific objectives and priorities. And that's what we're going to present to you tonight. And then we are where the arrows are, which is where we will be requesting formal approval and adoption of each plan. So a little bit of a rundown in the process. So the focus groups and individual interviews that occurred, you'll see in a moment who those individual interviews were with a variety of staff members throughout the district. And then there were a wide range of focus groups that identified sort of strengths, weaknesses of the district, public perception. They also evaluated some of the data. So there were thirteen individuals that were considered district administration that actually went through the individual interviews. There was one Board of Education, sort of cohort or group, and then a Seneca Nation group that was interviewed as well. Then we had our focus groups. So, and this is a rundown of the focus groups. And this is a pretty good prospect, excellent section, not only of school personnel, but school personnel is school personnel. And what we really value the most is outside of the school. So we had Chamber of Commerce, we had Territory Council, we had individuals from the Kiwanis Club, which is one of the local service organization. We had our Indigenous Parent Committee, we had students in the form of the government. We had middle school students as well, our Indigenous Student Council. Epic, which is our first and influences children. We had our Student Activist Club, we had Family Liaison, we invited senior citizens, which was a focus group. And then we had faculty members. So that is a pretty good representation, not only of those who participate, but certain people and groups who might have particular interests and are vested interests in this school. So what did we find after we collected a lot of the data? I'm not gonna read all of this to you. I'll just read the good parts. So some of the strengths. One of the things that was, and I'm presenting this on behalf of the group, but consistently across the board. And I think we know this and see this. Very rarely will you find a district like Salamaca with the leaders, the. Very rarely will you find a district like Salamango with the leaders, educators, administrators, support staff and the Board of Education that is as committed as the individuals that are here. You've heard me say that over and over again. But sometimes it's the same person preaching to the choir. This time, we actually had the data from a variety of sources. We also learned, and we know this, that we offer an extensive number of programs and services. And what would put our district up against pretty much any other district, not only in the region, but Western New York for the amount of school clubs that we have and extracurriculars. We also have a very rich cultural diversity being located on the Seneca Nation territory. And we have a very solid financial management in place, thanks to Mrs. McGara and. Thanks to Mrs. McGara. So those are some of the strengths. Then, since we in education don't say weaknesses anymore, these are the challenges or opportunities for growth. We need to take a look at broadening the focus beyond the traditional four-year college. And even some of the trade schools. So there were issues that came up where they suggested that we really need to start addressing some of the things like student stress and a consistent emphasis on academic success. We see it in spurts, but the consistent focus on academics needs to increase. We also recognize that there's a need for additional mental health and work, school, life balance. This is significantly greater post pandemic than it even was before. And that is not unique to Salamango. We see that across the region, across the state, across the country. We also have the same concerns that other districts have with hiring and retaining high quality educators. And that is across the board, educators, administrators, support staff. We know that there are some upcoming retirements. And we also understand the importance of having the right person and a very good person in whatever that role is that they have in the district. So that is an area that we have been focusing on and need to continue on. We also recognize that while many of the spaces have been updated, there are still some classroom spaces that are a bit outdated and in need of improvement. We know that that's true particularly of Prospect. And fortunately, with positive vote on May twentieth, we have the resources to invest into that. So while that is an area for growth, I think we're going to see some of that turn around very quickly. We also had a survey that went out. And that survey went out to, it looks like two hundred and ninety-one stakeholders. The largest group was staff and teachers, so about forty-seven percent. And then we have parent guardians, which made up the second largest group. With regard to the sort of state of the district survey, you'll see some of the strengths that were identified through that. Technology is well integrated in the classrooms, facilities are well maintained, schools are safe. The district engages in diverse racial, cultural and socioeconomic groups. And the technology infrastructure is more than sufficient, if sufficient there for the technology in the classroom. And then some of the top rated priorities for the future. So see, these are areas that we really need to be focusing on. Again, making sure students are ready. I'm going to say they talk about career readiness, this came up as a discussion point. Maybe we just need students to be ready for life in general, right? We focus in education on career and college readiness. But even if people are career and college ready, there are certain aspects that you need to be able to know and be able to do in life that are areas we can improve upon. Providing a safe environment for students and employees. What's interesting, right, is because the previous slide talked about that as a strength. And one of the values in having people get together to talk is we had a discussion about what safe means. And in the context of how this is presented, it isn't just having a building that you can't get into and processes for emergency. Safe in this particular case, and this was what was brought up by the students on the team, discussed feeling safe, right? Feeling safe and being able to express yourself, but also being safe from humiliation or bullying that occurs in schools. And that is a priority for us, but it needs to continue to be a priority. Bullying school is, it's there, right? It has been there, this isn't new. What we need to do is ensure that we're doing a better job of addressing it and ensuring we know what the norms are and bullying is not one of the norm. So also continue working with hiring and retaining our quality teachers and a well-rounded experience. Some of the high rated programs in the district, the intramural and athletics, our extracurriculars, fine arts, phys ed, library and our resource centers. Regarding equity, these are some of the high points that were identified as strongly agreeing. Minority students are encouraged to participate in extracurricular sports. Programs and partnerships exist to feed, clothe and address the physical and mental health needs. Students have at least one trusted adult in the building. And I'll tell you, that is something that we strive for. When students feel that they have a trusted adult in their life, that allows them to have somebody to go to when an issue arises. And that is critically important for us in an area that we value and an area we're in a period of overtime. And that the district allocates resources to ensure struggling students receive support. And I'll go back to Mr. John nine or ten years ago, who consistently talked about what we're doing to help those students who need support and the tutoring. And over the years, we have increased that and we're actually now getting recognized for that. But that doesn't mean we're done adding stuff. We'll continue. But that is an area that we have, it looks like, made a progress on. So some of the work that we've had that was done. On the nineteenth and twentieth, we had stakeholders from the school, all facets of the school, as well as the community. Mr. John and Mr. Colton participated in that. And what did we do? They collected the data, they reviewed different groups or groups broke down on the data that was presented. They did a SWOT, was a strength, weakness, opportunity and threat analysis. There were certain themes identified, they prioritized the work. Then we worked on our mission, vision and core values. Broke it down into priorities, we created objectives, and then came up with a consensus on the mission, vision, core values, priorities and objectives. Those are basically a rundown. That was a busy two days. And I really want to express our gratitude to the people who worked on that. Right there. So these are all of the different individuals. You'll see folks and names that we probably know all of the names. But you'll see that there are individuals that represented a wide range of backgrounds, including students. And I think for those people who participated, the students input was very interesting and helpful. So these are some of the deliverables, which was provided. You'll see in a moment where we are with the mission, core values, vision, priority and objectives. Okay, so our mission statement, as recommended by the Strategic Planning Committee, is to be modified to the following. Empower every warrior by creating an environment of love, learning, hope and trust. There was a lot of discussion that went around this. And it checked the three boxes, which is that a mission statement should be memorable, shareable and inspirational. So this is the recommendation that comes from that committee. The vision, which provides us sort of a little bit of a bigger picture of what we're doing. Every warrior will achieve their maximum potential and thrive in an ever-changing world. So that is what essentially the goal is, or what we see as the purpose for Salamango Schools. And then we have the portrait of a warrior, which is this been updated a little bit from what we were before, but not much is changing from the portrait of a warrior that we've worked on previously. And then we have our values. So given the mission and the vision, the group determined that these are our four key values. Inspiration with intent, right? Our actions are intentional, data informed and continuously refined. Empowerment for every learner to achieve and grow. And there was a lot of discussion and wordsmithing on each one of these words, right? The empowerment is an important word where we provide the opportunity for students to take ownership and we have the power to achieve and grow. Justice and opportunity for all. So we celebrate the honor and honor the diverse culture. And then student-centered collaboration and communication. Recognizing once again that we are here for the students and all of the collaboration that occurs in our communication should be focused on that. So given that, we identified the following five priorities. One, academic achievement and future readiness, right? That's pretty much what schools should be doing. We're going to strengthen our cultural integration and community collaboration. Identify and implement clear systems to ensure consistent practices. Attack, attack, yeah, attract, support and retain high quality personnel. I don't want to attack them. Health, safety and wellbeing of all students, staff and community. Each one of these, as they were discussed, brought up a rich conversation. And after quite a bit of time, this is where we landed. And we have objectives for each one of these. So under the areas that we talked about, you will see three to five objectives. Academic achievement, we're going to foster a supportive, inclusive school environment. Integrate life skills, which is one of the things that we talked about. Prepare students for college, career and life, not just college and career. And increase our student performance and mastery of standards. Again, these aren't in any prioritized order because they're equally important. Strengthen our cultural integration. So we're going to continue to nourish our partnership with the Seneca Nation. We're going to require the integration of indigenous study standards, pre-K through twelve. Continue the collaboration with the community and our other external stakeholders. And another area, and this was an interesting area, because this has come up through our staff surveys as well, is ensuring that we have consistent practices and being able to communicate those. So improve the alignment of financial stewardship with our district goals. Align our expectations for student and staff success. Provide thorough communication within the district and the community. And then our last two objectives. Particularly when we talk about attracting, supporting and retaining high quality personnel. We're going to do our best to recruit to a wider audience. Encourage staff and students to pursue education careers. And that's a big piece is encouraging our students to continue their education and then come back and work with us. Provide professional development opportunities and additional financial incentives for the students and staff. This was interesting, explore housing alternatives to attract candidates. This is a relatively progressive action. And if you looked at housing in Salamango, it's difficult to find housing. And one of the things that we value, and that came from the group, is having our teachers and staff members live in the Salamango community. And then we're going to continue to improve branding, get the word out that we're a great place to work. The last objective is the health, safety and wellbeing of all students, staff and the community. You'll see that in the past, we haven't really articulated the community commitment. We have expressed it and done things for that, but it hasn't always been part of our written objectives. And that's relatively new to those. So we're going to contribute to the wellbeing of our students and staff. Contribute to the wellbeing of our community. And we're going to increase the environmental, physical, medical and mental safety of our students and staff. About, okay. So that wraps up the work that was done really over the past almost seven months. And presented, actually, we have this on the agenda for tonight, for approval?
No, I put it for the next.
So at our next board meeting, pending your approval, this will move forward with an action plan. But we wanted to present it to you tonight so that you have an opportunity to provide us with some feedback on it. And then we'll look for approval in our next board meeting. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Great job. Appreciate that. Next up, we have the AMC recognition, NISBA to member.
All right, this is an exciting moment where I have the opportunity on behalf of the New York State School Boards Association to recognize one of our school board members. So the New York State School Boards Association has a program that focuses on board excellence. And what they do is they recognize individuals who make certain achievements. And tonight, it is my pleasure on behalf of NISBA to recognize our very own Mr. Christian Reiler as achieving level one in the board achievement board.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Beach. Sure, thank you very much. To everybody, to the New York State School Boards Association and my colleagues up here on the school board as well and all of you for giving me this opportunity to serve on this toolboard. It isn't something I take lightly. And each and every day, each and every meeting, every chance we get, I am constantly learning something new. Hopefully be able to bring back here and help the students and staff and everybody, the whole community as a whole. So just humble, blessed, honored. So thank you very much.
Ten thousand more points to go on.
I know.
All right, let's see, so we are on item number four, our executive session. So. All right, so can I get a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel? Want to my question, second of the day, are there any questions? All in favor? We oppose, we abstain? Tonight, we are going into executive session. So we'll meet in the live room.
Don't count if you're leaving early.
They only needed an hour. They only needed an hour there.
So now we are back from executive session. The motion to move on to the executive session. With Christian, any questions? Any questions? How in favor? I have your votes. My motion carried.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Executive session.
I'm sorry to interrupt your motion because I'm excited.
I'm sorry. Christian motion. Dale seconded.
Thank you.
At six thirty four.
Thank you.
Hey, um, where are we? We are in item number six, communications, public communications and title six parent advisory. Do you have anybody from the public?
No one is stressed to talk. Then Erin Hiddleby.
Oh, you missed everybody.
Erin said you'll report next.
All right, well, we'll move on to item B, central office message. Who wants to start? Flip a coin.
Oh, I don't have much. You have a lot written down.
No, this is all mine. I was absolutely super impressed with the kiddos. They were like three minutes into it and I was like, okay, done. Um, that and Mark, I thought the same exact thing that next year they'll be in here asking for ninth grade, you know, so I'm like just give it to them all upfront. There was a fantastic presentation and in the just the public presence that those kids have is amazing. At that age, I'd have been standing in the back like this. Um, sometimes still do, but um, yeah, as far as the business office, et cetera, it's hard for the course, I guess, closing out this year and starting up next year. Um, we had four hundred, I think it was four hundred and ninety-four purchase orders that we did through Ed Data, which saves the clerical staff and my staff a ton of time from having to enter in all kinds of stuff. Um, so we spent eighty-nine thousand dollars on school supplies that are becoming between now and the startup school. Um, and had we bought those at regular prices, it probably would have been closer to a hundred and fifty. Um, but with the Ed Data process that we use, it's only, only eighty-nine thousand. Um, other than that, it's pretty much same old single for us.
Great, awesome.
I will second our, uh, the, the leaders group. It was so impressive. It actually made me emotional. I think I was crying at one point at just how powerful their message was and how proud I was of them. Um, and I just wanna, you know, again, what Mark said, just recognize their families because that's just so incredible that these kids are doing these things and it just brings us back to remember the reason that we're here, right, which is for kids and we sometimes lose sight of that. And so it was a really powerful presentation. So I think Ms. Morrison and all of our staff that really support the leaders program happening. I think it's been three years now since we expanded four through seven. Um, and it's really grown and it's just exciting. Um, I also want to highlight all of the positive work and hard work that went into developing our strategic plan. That was a great two days spent. So just thank you to those people that helped with that. Um, and then Girls on the Run, Run event was this past Sunday and I had the opportunity to attend that and feel of our Salamika kiddos and they were just so excited and proud and I just want to recognize them and all of their hard work and think our coaches and all the running buddies for, you know, putting in the time and the commitment. It's such a great program for building self-esteem and confidence in our kiddos. So leaving today, feeling really proud to be a warrior.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, um, we're gonna go back to the usual routine here. So let's have a volunteer. Dad, Mr. Bartosz was like, hey, another thing too, um, I was just looking at the screen and I just happened to think of something. Like typically when I call on some of our district staff to say a few words, the video doesn't pick everybody up. So as, as we're looking for volunteers, how about you state your name and your position so the people, if they are watching online or watching a recording, they know who's talking because they might not see you on the video.
So I can see my bald spot, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they just circled it. Yeah, name, name and position.
Chad Bartoszak, Athletic Director.
Yep.
Tomorrow is our final, final day of athletics, Saturday of athletics. So I'm just, uh, first and foremost, I want to thank, um, Transportation Facility Security Board, Staff, everyone who's all supported us this year. It is a a long haul and it's an exhale. Um, but all the kids that were here is why we do it and providing them with opportunity is the drive. Moving update is another opportunity for us to back the manager athletes coming Monday. It's a good, uh, assembly for us. Really a wide range of athletics, some are unified programs for us, three sport athletes who are our athlete of the year. So, um, after we get through some of that, we're gonna refocus on the summer. Summer swims come in, registration for summer athletic camps is all open and I think we're looking for more parents and and more kids to sign up as they get their summer plans in order. And, you know, I am, I'm just got a little vacation coming up after graduation. So I just get to the second few weeks.
Awesome. Thank you. Who's next?
I'll go.
All right.
I'm the Chief of Student Support and Information. And first I want to start by congratulating our Unified Sports Team. Uh, the coaches, the parents, the students, the support staff that take them to all the different events that are not very close. They are all over Western New York. I just want to say thank you to everybody. They have done an amazing job and I think we need to showcase just how hard they have worked since we started the unified program back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Been quite a while. So thank you to all of them. I also want to highlight that even though we're coming up on the end of the school year, we're wrapping up data meetings, we're wrapping up applications. A reminder and a shout out to all of our families. We currently have fifty-three out of our fifty-four seats of applications for UDK. So if you started an application and did not finish, you've received multiple phone calls, emails and letters home. Please give us a call. We have about fifteen of those that are out and we have just one spot left before we start creating a waitlist. And then when we look forward to the upcoming summer, I don't want to wish summer away, but on Friday, August twenty-second, Kim McLaren, our District Nurse Manager, has been working with Jimmy Rona, who works in conjunction with the Brockton School District to create a Community Wellness Day. She already has over fifty vendors that have agreed to come and set up tables and booths, not only for our students, but for families and for extended community members. So we're looking for anyone that has something to do with wellness or right now we're looking for people that may want to donate some time and do some haircuts to get our kids ready to come back to the buildings and back into school for the new year. They'll be doing vision screenings and lots of other things. So again, if you have anyone that you would like to send their way, we'd be happy to do that. And we're going to be working with our Facebook to see how we can have some volunteers to help bring families around for that day. So Friday, August twenty-second from eight AM until two thirty, great for you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. I can brush.
Yeah.
Dale said he could do brush cuts. I can do more cuts.
I'll learn you now.
Can we make sure that we get this advertised?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, it'll be good.
Who's volunteering next? Everyone's gonna have to go, so.
Kim Oaks, Prospect Principal. Um, we have, this is such a bittersweet time. Um, I were reflecting on the year celebrating all of our growth, um, and our accomplishments and, but the days are still busy, classrooms are busy, there's a lot of learning still taking place. Um, but we also have a lot of those end of the year celebrations. So the building, if you're around the building, you stop by the building, there's definitely a lot of energy in the building. Um, but the days are still productive and, and we're, the priority is still learning, obviously. Um, we have had, um, to kind of add to what Dr. Dubeck was saying, we've had our screening events for our incoming pre-K and kindergarten students. So that has been a wonderful opportunity to meet families and, uh, start to get to, to know and, um, develop that rapport with our, our youngest warriors that'll be coming into the district. Um, we also have had, um, so we've had our screening events. We have had our Kinder Walks as our pre-K students prepare to transition to kindergarten. Those are very big moments in their lives. So we try to ease those transitions for them. Um, we've had a lot of our third to fourth grade transitions and partnering with, uh, Seneca and working with Mrs. Morrison and our third grade team as well to try to prepare, prepare those students for those big events in their lives. Um, and to ease some of those big feelings that they feel, uh, when it comes to those big transitions. Um, we have a lot of end of the year assemblies coming up, um, attendance celebrations. So it's, they're busy days, but like I said, we're trying to celebrate all that we've accomplished throughout the year. If I can also add on to, um, the work that the leaders did. Um, a couple of things that did not come up. So our third grade leaders, they prepared, um, speeches. They had a speak up night. And their families came and they weren't able to invite other guests as well and they prepared what leadership needs to them. And I was talking to the third grade leaders before they, um, stood up in front of a room of adults and I, like Mrs. Bieber was saying, it was, it's that moment where you reflect on, like, this is a moment in their lives where they're really pushing themselves to do something that's really hard. Um, and so we talked about that and how's that gonna grow your character and what is this moment gonna mean for you? Because it's gonna be two moments in your life or two minutes in your life, but think about, you know, how hard that is and you're going to accomplish that and you're gonna be so proud of yourself. So, um, that was a pretty significant moment and they did a wonderful job. And I think Mrs. Morrison, again, for, for setting them up for success on that and for providing those opportunities. Um, also she has been, I think it's important, important to note that, um, she has been kind of work cultivating and working with, um, probably kind of leaders in training, so second graders kind of soliciting those, um, those up and coming leaders that are, um, in the second grade cohort. So talking to them about leadership, bringing in our third grade leaders, bringing in the older leaders as well. So she started to have those conversations and prepare those kids at the younger grades as well. So um, you opened it up. I could keep talking. So there's a lot to celebrate. It's been a wonderful year. Um, I'm proud of our staff. They, they work hard, they're learners all year long. They develop such wonderful relationships and rapport with our students. Um, and I'm proud of all that we've accomplished all year. So. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hey, not a problem. Sounds like a great year. Who's next?
I'm going to go. I mean, I think it speaks for itself, I think, for the team. Um, no, I just again want to congratulate our second intermediate, third grade leader scheme for a job well done tonight and job well done all year. They've been an exceptional group of students. I've gotten to know most of the seventh graders. Um, I always joke that we started together. They started as fourth graders at Seneca when I started four years ago. So I've really gotten to, to grow with them and get to know them. Um, and I just hope that we can continue that program. And not only would we like to extend into eighth grade, but I'd like to continue to grow it and build more leaders, um, into different cohorts, I believe, that's what I'm saying. Um, just talking about winding down the school year, I cannot believe we are there, wrapping up loose ends. Putting plans in place for next year, solidifying, um, critical days into the summer. Picking off our leadership as well. We have our CEO, our last CEO celebration on Thursday. We're really focusing on, uh, the diligence. This is our fourth quarter of celebration where we're gonna have guest speaker Steve Trump, former SRO from Prospect. So we're excited to see him and bring him back. Um, we've got a lot of fun things happening, grade levels planning their kickball days at that and movies in the auditorium and water days and potato Olympics, um, and sixth grade's doing their Olympic on Friday. We also have our seventh grade moving update on June twenty-third. And as well as our next week, our seventh grade dance. The big honor for them is they're getting ready to transition to high school. And then lastly, I just want to thank our music department for a concert last week. We have our last band in fourth concert of the year. I actually got to be a participant and peel the nerves of our students. I had to play the cowbell. Throughout one of the songs, it was a great experience. I'm glad I got to be a part of that.
Awesome.
End of the year, we're ready to rest in the summer and reset and get next year going.
Yeah. What, what day did you say was the Officer Steve coming back again?
Uh, June twelfth in our, uh, CEO's.
Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
Oh, that's awesome. That would be fun for the kids. All right, who's next?
I'll go.
Jerry, Jerry for E C, Director of Special Education.
Um, so first I want to say, um, I was very excited last night at the awards banquet. Had three of the awards went to students with disabilities and I was really proud of them. Um, once we have really a bunch of good kids and, and, um, the opportunity to recognize their, their accomplishments despite, you know, sometimes difficulties that others don't have to deal with. So I'm really proud of the kids that won last night. So I was maybe feel good about that. Um, uh, we, I'm kind of actually really excited about this year. Uh, we've worked with the buildings administrators and, and staff to build new programming for our kids, more diversified programming for our kids. Um, specifically at, at Seneca and Prospect to provide more diversified supports for our kids with disabilities. Um, looking to bring our kids back to program. We have a couple of kids coming back from house replacements because they've done so well and we're looking to bring them back. Um, and also we're always trying to expand opportunities for our kids in terms of their, their needs. So I'm really, I'm really excited about the work that we've been able to do as a team um, for our, for our kid with disabilities. Um, and then, you know, end of year stuff, wrapping up with our data. Um, there is some, just so you guys know, um, um, there are some changes coming through New York State in terms of how the state reports back to the federal government or IBBA. We'll be in the middle of those types of conversations and talks with our local representatives, the state representative, they'll go over how we can better comply with what's happening. But I will say in the initial reports, um, we, our compliance is, is, you know, near perfect score in terms of compliance. There's some other areas we're working on that we can build on and take a scan on. Um, but we're, we're making that progress moving forward. So just excited, um, to move forward and see what else we can do for our kids next year. So. That was it.
Right. I appreciate that. All right.
Well, Erin left and Erin was gonna share this. Um, so today we've had a maple syrup, um, I guess a culminating event, um, from the tapping of the maple trees, um, to, you know, boiling and, and everything. So they came into the cafeteria today, um, several members of the nap team. So, um, Erin was there, Michelle, Andrea, Gabby. Um, and they made, I believe it was over five hundred pancakes. Um, and served, uh, the syrup that they had made, um, during, during lunch to all of the kiddos. And a lot of the kids made the connection to the tapping and the whole process at, at the third grade level. So, and a lot of our younger friends, um, now want to be a part of it. So Erin's got this work cut out for him as he works to grow programming. Cause there's a lot of, uh, interest in the, the tapping process. So, um, but I know Erin was gonna share that, so.
Thank you. All right, who's up?
Okay. As well. I'm the Assistant Principal, Chris Spohler. And I also wanted to shout out to the nap team. They've been coming into our seventh grade classrooms doing amazing activities every day. I was able to go in and eat ice cream the other day with them. I know it was just great activity. Students love when they come in and they're learning a lot. Um, another thing that we've been doing is focusing on some socially most most supports in our building. Working with some outside agencies to come in and provide training to our staff to grow that trauma-informed care and response. Um, and getting ready for summer school. So getting our, our Rita ready and getting our letters sent out and clearing up for a productive summer.
Awesome. The learning never stops. All right. Next.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, Director of Facility. Um, this time of year, it's like the beginning of the year. It's just as busy as crazy. People want this, want that because they're getting ready to go. Begin the year, it's just the opposite, you know, they're coming in and they want everything. And I was kind of excited today because we started our kickoff meeting for the new project. For the bus garage and prospects addition and renovations and some stuff here. And it was exciting. I, I enjoyed it. I really did. Gonna go continually do it and it never stopped, but I, I do enjoy it a lot. Facilities and they were gearing up for the summer. We have a lot of cleaning to do and they made it very difficult. They didn't have summer school this year here, but they got more camps, I think, than they did summer school. So it makes it really hard to work around all those things. We're, we're doing good. Everybody's pretty busy. My department's really doing well, doing a good job.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see.
Yeah. I'm Director of Business Education and Assistant Director of HR. Um, this year, like the beginning and the end, like Richard was saying, with HR, um, we're wrapping up end of the year. A lot of wrapping up contracts, payrolls, and then at the same time very quickly turning around to put in force new year information. Um, I'm very thankful that I have a team that works with me to make this happen very quickly. I'm also excited for the summer where I began working with Mr. Long and our business department on how we're gonna integrate some of the front shop activity as well as new food trucks and build that into the work field a little bit. I'm excited to see that. I have stuff specifically, I've always been support in that kind of. And as far as another exciting thing in HR, we are transitioning to paperless timesheet machine. And now it doesn't sound that exciting for you guys, but it is for us.
Well, that's exciting.
It's a big undertaking, honestly. On the employees in different classifications in groups, but yeah, we're always plugging ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. Roger.
Roger Ball, Director of Transportation. Extremely kind of season. Getting everything accomplished, finished safely. Looking forward to starting another year doing the exact same thing.
All right. Here's a job keeping those kids safe on the road. Most students instead, number one. All right, awesome.
Roger and I've been working very hard at trying to recruit the bus drivers. So this week he's done a few interviews in our. So, thank Roger. We're getting that clear tie very, very difficult.
How many do you think we're lacking? What are, what are you missing? I've lost several.
We started with, beginning of the school year, we started with five drivers short. We doubled up a lot of runs and then I had to have one, two lead under circumstances and I've only hired on three new drivers. And we're working on a few more. We've made a different approach for advertisement. Instead of just advertising, we're looking for employees. We did an open house scenario where they could show up and speak with somebody. We got a couple. It, uh, we'll keep at it. Maybe we can try a few more of those and see if it generates any more people.
Okay. Well, you heard it here first. We need bus drivers.
Yep. Yes, and we are working on a training program, advertisement for training. Get a driver in, um, that's gonna start July seventh and go through August fifteenth.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Who'd I miss? Did we miss anybody? Who'd I miss? Did we miss anybody? Levi, right in front. What do you have for us?
Um, busy year, just working with the senior class to wrap up their final year of high school. Uh, Monday, we had a senior walk through the building here and that went over to Prospect and allowed them to interact with kindergarteners and. Play on the playground for one last time. They seemed to really enjoy that. Uh, Monday the sixteenth, we have a moving update coming up. Um, we can start on the seventeenth. We have a new tradition. Uh, we started last year with Senior Sunset and Bonfire. Uh, Rich and his crew are there. Gathering pallets to have a nice bonfire um out back by Bus Garage. Uh, let's senior parade on the twenty fifth, started Dudley coming down Broad Street and at the end of Avenue. Course graduations on the twenty seventh, uh, very recent rehearsals on the twenty sixth. Uh, still hopeful for weather. We're uh moving the the um. Event to the new track and field facility, just to alleviate some of the congestion on Broad Street and everything over there. Um, so hoping to have outside random lights with a very atmosphere. Overall, just wrapping everything up behind the. Make sure everybody. Is she strong?
Thank you. So. Was was that a major concern moving graduation over there then with the the traffic construction and everything else?
I think we had a little bit of effort, right? I mean, we talked about that. Showcase the new facility, exactly. So it was a little bit of each. I think, uh, actually, Mr. Lawton, and I don't know, sometimes two guys are still working on that.
Oh, there we go.
If it does rain, we can move it right in. It is, you know, I always got to transport so much stuff back and forth and put the road the way it is.
I mean, at least, you know, the new has a need and everything out there, you know, looking fit. We learned last night, we need seven people. But it is, I think it'll be a nice, you know, the new warrior head on the field. I think more ample parking over there with the new parking lot, bus garage right there, easy access to setting parking lot. You know, people are part of the main lot, they can walk through the building. Just something new to see.
Awesome. Yeah, what's what's the seating capacity in the bleachers building?
We know this.
Seventy seven fifty eight or fifty something.
What comparable to bats? What's bats?
They're just over.
Okay.
We're having some size leaders over here too, and I don't think that includes, they're they're for like the uh long one, high jump, high jump.
Okay. All right, well, thanks, everybody. I'm glad to see that most of you were prepared with something. You just never know when it's your turn to speak, so. All right, uh, we're going to move on. Um, we have our Board of Education message and we're going to start on this end today. Mr. Dale Coleman.
All right. First off, I'd like to say I apologize for for being late. I I had some other function to go to. Um, it sounds like I missed a great presentation with the students. And their legal program. Um, I also attended last night's more year awards ceremony. And uh, it's nice to see all the parents and students and staff there recognizing students for achievement and and effort. So. That's it.
Okay. Well, thanks, sir. Great.
I also want to say congratulations to all the students that received awards last night. The casino cost me a little bit of money. And good luck to all the students and staff on the upcoming five months.
Thank you. Hey.
No, I just wanted to uh, there was to have, I think everybody's kind of doing with the leader group that came in, uh, shouting them. That was a a pretty good presentation. Especially when, you know, you're trying to expand over them and they leave their own presentation. They have supporting witnesses, supporting documentation. Um, that's a pretty good sell on their end. We live right up to pretty much what they're trying to accomplish. So. Just a a shout out to them for a great job there. The uh. Looking forward to graduation. Um. Not the one that all our seniors are thinking of. The uh, I I got a kindergarten that's graduating next week. He's not. He has to start up many more years before he gets to the the final walk, but uh. Just wanted to, he came home the other day and the uh. The seniors with the walks with kindergarten, that that uh, we didn't do that when I was that age, but yeah, I thought that was pretty mean. And explained to him once, oh. Quite a few more years before he used to be the the taller person walking, the short guy around. But um, that uh, that sounded like it was a hit with a lot of the kids and. Just wanted to recognize that and uh, a good way on his end, you know, a reflection in both directions. The uh. The kindergarteners got to see, you know, what they're striving to stump. And then at the same time, all the seniors involved probably can't remember being kindergarten. In Denver, but at the same time, uh, you know. Keep that, keep all the memories in in the course of the year of the school years. Um. The uh, and just the congratulations to the students last night at the the dinner and the awards there. The um. There's a lot of things going on, like everybody said, for the end of the year going on. The uh, with that said, you know, this is pretty much the last meeting before. It's pretty much done for a lot of students. Um, with that said, summer's coming up. The uh, while we were having a a good dinner last night, the uh. Four or five of my friends were involved in the tornado on the other end of it, a great salary. So just with that said. Coming up, you know, the kids, we have a structured environment around here. Summer's coming. Just uh, you know, friendly reminder to the kids, the parents, the community, you know, a couple more weeks, everybody's going to be running around during the day. So uh. Just be safe out there and not let everybody run around. About that.
All right. Tracy.
Very cool. Just want to say thank you to Miss Morrison, um, for being a leader to lead this group. I also went to the awards ceremony last night. Um, that's something that I really enjoyed going to. I just like listening to. Um, stories about students, you know, the words that that they're receiving and why they're receiving the word, you know, how they got now here. Um, so thank you for inviting me to that. Um. Also, yes. It's the end of the year. Last meeting before school is out. So good luck to everybody on here in Samson. Stay safe.
Thank you. Christian.
Well. Got a whole page to note to.
We're ready for it.
No, no. Um, well. First off, I'd like to, um, it is Morgan, right? That was her name?
Yeah, yes.
Morgan Palmer?
Yes.
What what grade is she in? Seven? How impressive is that, you know? That was really cool. And you know what? At at work the other day, um. Counselor Porter, who had spoken tonight, already. Um, sitting up there with Morgan's family and they're that they were actually talking about her at work and and and. You know, the great job she's doing. So I want to commend her, as well as all the other leaders that came up today, um, that spoke, that didn't speak, that just came to be acknowledged and uh. As a father of uh now four young children, but three that are in the district, um, how those students know that, you know, they they are um. Their leadership and mentorship to these younger kids coming up behind them is very uh important in the roles that they play. A lot of these younger kids look up to them. And uh, it's just exciting as a, as a new, somewhat new board member and a parent of this. Uh, student who's district to see all the great things that are going on. Um, like Counselor Porter had mentioned last week, having the third graders come in. Um, you know, from years in the past, I would always watch, um, you know, via social media, you know, see the photos and whatnot afterwards. Of that going on and I always thought it was really cool and, you know, and I was, you know, I was like envisioned one day being able to be a part of that and. Um, last week was that and, you know, I tell you what, it was, it was everything I would hope for and and then more. So. Um, those students had great questions, um, comments. They had a lot of fun. Uh, not bragging, but a few of them playing over my seat, so it was kind of cool. It made me feel really cool, um, made me feel proud, really proud. Um, and I want to thank Mrs. Morrison on her efforts there and then everybody else that helped with that as well. Um, just a lot of really exciting stuff going on and. Um, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the dinner last night, but I've been, you know, it's going on, but uh. I want to acknowledge those award winners and on all their and their families and all the hard work that led up to their their being recipients of these awards. So. Um, all well deserved and um. Yeah, just huge shout out to all of you. Um, those of you that are here and those that aren't, that couldn't make it. Um. Huge journalist for all your hard work throughout this year as we wrap up towards the end of the school year. I just am very grateful, preaching everyone you and um. It's only day courage one, let me get to the other. No, um, yeah, just just thank you guys very much on everything you're doing and I'm looking forward to. Successful graduation and good luck to everyone on their final exams and wrapping up the school year. Four words.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you to all of our staff. Thank you to everybody for everything you do for this amazing school year. Thank you to my colleagues for being so supportive of everything that happens here. We can't do it without you guys, you know, all of our staff, you you make the wheels go around here and I've said it before, you know. And that's what we're here for is to help the kids and you guys do a wonderful job and I'm appreciative. Um, part of that is the same thing everyone was talking about, the the awards dinner last night, our ninth, our ninth awards dinner and I. I think I've been to every, well, I think I missed one. I do believe I missed one of them, but those, those, those awards presentations are awesome. It really is a great night and I love attending those. But one of the things you see is even the staff who are up there talking about the students. Their staff who every year will get emotional talking about their students because they care. And that's what they care for. But that's also why I thank all of our staff every single time we're up here is because of the effort and commitment that's put forward. But even in, even in that awards dinner last night, you see it. You see it. You see that personal relationship. You see that commitment that they put forward. And that's, that's part of the reason why I love attending those, you know, but I like seeing that, you know, like seeing all the kids, the smiling faces, you know. At the end, they all take a group photo and they're all having a great time. So that's an awesome thing. Um. Another one, uh, the presentation tonight, that was awesome. You know, everyone's, everyone's already said it, but I'll I'll say it again. It was awesome. Uh, you know, Christian, you mentioned about Morgan. Um, she's, she's a phenomenal, phenomenal young woman. Uh, I went to the um. The fall drama presentation, Ariel Junior. She was the lead Ariel and she did an amazing job in that drama production, amazing. So that that was, if you, if you didn't get to see it, you missed a good one, but. She's in seventh grade and she's got a lot more years ahead of her in drama, so I guarantee she'll be in productions coming, you know, as we go through the years. So if you missed her last year, you'll be able to see her in the future ones. Um, but that was a great presentation and that does, it shows really great leadership. I I loved it. We've, we've seen that leadership program for years here. Uh, we see what it's producing and again, even like Karen touched on it. You know, the kids who were able to just stand up in front of strangers of of audience, you know, and just talk about the program. You know, that's, that's leadership, you know, public speaking. That's, that's tough. Not everybody can sit, stand up there in front of a group like this and just. Start telling you what's going on. It doesn't happen that often, so I I appreciate everything that they're doing. I appreciate Mrs. Morrison working with that program. Like I said, we're going to expand it. I think we need to give her some help here. And um, now honestly, I'm not sure how many people are involved with that program or if it's just her. But that's something that's worth looking into to see how we can help the most of that. Um, yeah, as far as the end of the year. We're here, we're there, you know, a couple more weeks and we'll be saying word to the school year goal. And of course, for a lot of you, it's getting prepped for next year. You know, the learning never stops and I'm so appreciative of everyone who does that. Um, summertime isn't always a break for everybody and there are folks who will be working on something along to make sure that these kids have what it takes and. What they need to move on into the next year and also prepare for the next year. So the appreciation is there, you know, and I just wanted that not to go on side. It it's there, the appreciation's there from all of us. So I think I speak to all my colleagues, women, saying we appreciate everything that all of you do. Um, and I'll leave it at that. There's, there's a million more things to talk about, but, you know, that's. We could be here all night, you know, like Kim said earlier, she, well, you open the door and we could keep talking about things, Bob. Oh, did you have one more? But um, we'll, we'll turn it over to Dr. Wheeler and hear what he has to say for us.
Just a couple notes. I did want to make a note that June sixteenth is uh. This is logistical, uh, fifteen minute early dismissal across the district. So for our parents and teachers, um. I have teachers too, fifteen minutes, get extra fifteen minutes that evening. Um, it's just part of our requirements to put that in place. Uh, but for, just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. I don't know what more to say about the leaders. Everything was going great until they said that they wanted Mrs. Morrison leave and I'm like. Man, I was going to jump right in there and going to pick up with eighth grade. I guess I'll work with her. I got so excited. I'm like, damn, I want to attach myself to these kids. That was very powerful. So. You'll be hearing from us as we move forward and um, have a proposal to formalize that, but uh, I definitely want to get involved with that and look forward to working with those students. Uh, just a note of congratulations to our girls' cross team. Uh, the. Great season, a lot of great athletes. Some of them were recognized at, uh, at least one in particular, uh, was recognized at the award last night. And she's moving on to the All Stars. So, uh, what a great season. It didn't necessarily, you know, go as fast, but. You know, that sort of is a given because at some point in time, unless you win it all, you're going to come to an end, but it was a great season by a great bunch of uh ladies. Um, and again, the war tonight, last night, what a great opportunity to showcase the. The students should do good at being a student, right? And sometimes that takes the form of academics. Sometimes it takes the form of um. Effort and sometimes it just takes the form of being a good person. And last night was an opportunity to recognize all those individuals.
Thank you. Well, thank you. All right, so we are going to move on now. Item number seven, consent agenda. Uh, we have our financial items, our CSE recommendations, CPS recommendations. Going to get a motion to approve the consent agenda. With Dale. Sent by Brad. Are there any questions? No questions, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstained? Motion carried. All right, item eight, old business. We have no old business. Item number nine, new business. Uh, item A, declare surplus books. Being resolved that on the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of Seneca immediate. School books listed in the public content section be surplused and placed in a location for students and staff to take first and then to dispose of any remaining books. To properly be approved. Can I get a motion? Which by Christian?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any questions? All in favor? Hi, hi. Any opposed, any abstained? Motion carried. All right. We are on to item number B or item number letter B. Uh, Turner contract phase five point O will be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The AIA agreement, B one thirty-two dash two thousand nineteen standard form of agreement between owner and architect. Construction manager as advisor addition between Salamaka City Central School District and Turner Construction Company. For construction management services for the Salamaka City Central School District. June twenty twenty-five referendum consisting of a new transportation facility, additions, alterations, and site work for Prospect Elementary School. Renovations at the middle high school and renovations to the existing bus garage. Be approved and superintendent of schools be authorized to execute the agreement be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Hi, hi. Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, motion carried. Okay, item C, Labella contract phase five point zero. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the AIA agreement, C one thirty-two, two thousand nineteen standard form of agreement between owner and construction manager as advisor. Between Salamaka City Central School District and Labella Associates PC. Now, for architectural services for the Salamaka City Central School District. June twenty twenty-five referendum consisting of a new transportation facility, additions, alterations, and site work for Prospect Elementary School. Renovations at the middle high school and renovations to the existing bus garage be approved and the superintendent of schools be authorized to execute the agreement be approved. Can I get a motion? What about Brad? Second by Ted. Any questions?
Yeah. That only costs a dollar eighty. Here.
Oh, yeah, dollar more.
I mean, I'll definitely promote our Valerie.
Their agenda. What is it?
So to clarify, it's one point eight billion. Not, not one dollar and eighty cents.
Thank you. Yeah.
You're right.
All right, I forgot where we were. Did we get a first second?
Oh, Brad and Ted.
Okay, all right. So are there any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, motion carried. And it is not for a dollar eighty. All right, so item D, we have our NISBA area three director election. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Salamaka City Central School District cast one vote for Christine Schnars for the position of New York State School Board Association Area Three Director effective January one, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Christian?
Wait. Motion by Christian.
I'll say. Motion by Christian, second by Dale. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, motion carried. Item E, our SSSO memorandum of agreement. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Salamaka Service Staff Organization Unit, SSSO, MOA, uh, number SSSO two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-seven dash zero eight regarding a member of the association who presently employed as a bus driver and is a security guard as a member of the Consolidated Service Unit Association for the district and a member recently had a medical issue that prevents him from continuing to work as a bus driver for the district. In the association and the district desire to have the member continue to be employed by the district and the parties have come to an agreement that the man, that member can work as a temporary employee for the district in the position of food service helper until October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Be approved. Can I get a motion? Motion. Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor? Right, right. Any opposed, any abstained? All right, motion carried. Item F, Board of Education Reorganization Meeting. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of superintendent, Board of Education Reorganization will meeting be held on July first, twenty twenty-five to begin at five thirty PM in the high school. Uh, large group instruction room be approved. And again, motion.
Motion.
Motion by Christian?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Are there any questions? No. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, motion carried. Item G, donation from Seneca Gaming and Entertainment and the Seneca Nation Tribal Council. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Salamaka City Central School District Board of Education accepts a one-time donation from Seneca Gaming and Entertainment, the Salamaka Hall, in the amount of one thousand dollars to use for the Cindy Moore five K for supplies and scholarship fund and a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved and be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Salamaka City Central School District Board of Education accepts a one-time donation from Seneca Nation Tribal Council in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to use for the Cindy Moore five K for supplies and scholarship fund and a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Christian?
Second.
Second by Ted. Any questions? Comment? Um, reminder, Cindy Moore five K is this Saturday, registration and nine AM. Uh, the run walk starts at ten AM. Uh, there will be, um, chicken barbecue, I believe, uh, few for sale day of the event. Um, it's a great event to honor a wonderful woman and a scholarship, uh, is presented every year in her honor and her legacy. Um, I've heard that there are several scholarships being awarded this year. No spoiler alert, but that's what I've heard. So we have, um, it's a great event. And if you have the time and are able, come on down to Bets Park on Saturday and join us for the fifth annual Cindy Moore five K. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstained? All right, motion carried. All right, item H, we have a settlement agreement. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Salamaka City Central School District hereby approves a settlement to the confidential settlement discussed during the June tenth, twenty twenty-five executive session and hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the district in accordance with the same terms discussed. Can I get a motion? Motion. Motion by Dale? Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, motion carried. All right, item number ten, we are on to personnel consent agenda. Uh, personnel action, item number one, we have our certified classified resignations. Um, we have our certified classified F and L A, paving with absence, updating with absence. Our certified classified appointments. Our student teacher internship practical field work outside agencies. Um, appointments for coaching and athletics. We have personnel action number two, which is our summer program teacher. Teachers. Personnel action number three, our summer steam camp teachers. Personnel action number four, our summer athletic camp teachers. Personnel action number five, our summer adventure camp teachers. And I'll be looking for a motion, I'm gonna read it. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the personnel action items listed in the public content of section eight, item A, item B, item C, item D, and item D be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ted?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Are there any questions? All in favor? Right, right. Any opposed, any abstained? All right, let's go on to introduction of newly appointed staff.
All right, there was a lot of work that just went into item A, B, C, D, and E. And we would like to take a moment to highlight some of the people that are included in A, B, C, D, and E. And I think Jerry and Tim, did you want to touch base on one of those fine individuals who's sitting right down here? And it is very happy that she got one of the longer board meetings that, uh, they waited through to make sure it was really gonna happen.
So it is our pleasure to recommend Jenna Emily for permanent appointment as an occupational therapist. I think this is just an example of her dedication, her professionalism. All of the amazing things we're going to say, say in just a minute because she stuck with us till the end. Um, so, but Jenna has been a wonderful addition to, um, to the district and to the prospect team. Um, initially, um, she had a lot to navigate. She was working in, um, as, you know, throughout the district, but specifically in two buildings. Um, navigating the teams, trying to look at caseloads, evaluations. Um, and even on top of that, um, taking the initiative to work not only within our agencies within Catararas County, but outside of the county. Um, and just navigating all of those agencies and then communicating that information back to the team. So there's a lot of layers of, um, what makes Jenna amazing. Um, but and ultimately she's wonderful with our children. She is very collegial, gets along wonderful with her colleagues, has great communication skills. Can't say enough of, enough about Jenna. She's, she's done an amazing job. So congratulations.
You have a speech for us?
Just happy to be here. Um, excited to have a great first year here. I'm looking forward to, to next year and to grow and expand.
If, if I may just say, um, I don't know if folks know how hard it is to find an occupational therapist in this very much like West New York or New York State. To land in somebody like Jenna, we are incredibly fortunate. Um, because she has stepped in right away as if she'd been a veteran here for many years. Supporting our kids, coming with ideas, helping support children differently, helping provide different types of opportunities for them, whether they have, um, an IEP, a file for or not. Um, so she really, really, uh, certainly both being really, really proud and really impressed with what she's done and what she's been working with her. Um, for the issue.
Man, who else? All right. I get a chance now to talk about our very own athletic director. Mr. Chad Bartosik, who you just granted tenure to. A lot of times, you know, I just sort of talk, right? But I'm actually gonna, because this is important. And I don't wanna, I wanna make sure I don't miss anything. So I crafted this rather lengthy letter and I'm gonna hit, use this basically to hit some of the highlights because I spent quite a bit of time thinking about what are some of the attributes that Mr. Bartosik has that we admire about him? And I just wanna for not everybody gets to see this, so I just wanna take the opportunity to actually read it. It's with great enthusiasm that I recommend Chad Bartosik for tenure as the Athletic Director for Salamaka Schools. Over the course of his tenure, Ta- Chad has demonstrated exemplary leadership, integrity, and dedication to academics, athletic excellence, and community engagement. And I put it in that order. Uh, I guess you're gonna get the annotated version as I talk through this. Right? Because sometimes I've worked with a variety of different athletic directors and their focus has been on athletics. Chad's has always been on the student athlete. And academics has come first. And you've seen that through the programs that he's put in place, whether it's just coaching his own team or doing what he needs to do and still across the entire district, a focus for our athletes on ensuring that they're meeting their athle- uh, academic requirements. And we've seen that in an increased number of scholar athletes and scholar athletes teams. His accomplishments and contributions to Salamaka Schools as well as broader sports about the community make him a vital asset to the district and an inspiring figure to students, staff, and community members alike. He sort of fits all those pieces, right? Not only has he had a highly successful personal career, but he's taken those skills, lives in the community, doesn't just come to work and do the job here, but he also does that outside with the community as a whole, even with our youngest athletes. And that's been recognized, you know, so Chad's leadership has been recognized, underscoring his ability to inspire and lead effectively. So some of the most recent accolades, twenty twenty-four, Section Six Coaches' Sportsmanship Award. Honored for leadership, character, and integrity on the sidelines. Twenty twenty-three Buffalo News All-Western New York Coach of the Year. Boarded across all classifications. Twenty twenty-three Ole Miss Times Herald Big Thirty Coach of the Year for significant contributions to interscholastic athletics. Twenty twenty-three Buffalo Bills and Pro Coach of the Year. This one was pretty big. Remarkable recognition of his coaching excellence and ability to elevate his team to new heights. It's important to note that these awards, you know, they don't just recognize the technical skills, but emphasize the respect and admiration that he's earned from his peers, the players, and the community. And that I think is really, I mean, you've been with us for four years and you've already racked up four pretty significant awards. So congratulations on that. It's also important to note that above and beyond the work that he does here every day, he gives back to the community, volunteers his time to nurture youth sports. Whether it be the Community Youth Football League, SYI Boys and Girls Basketball, SYI Wrestling, Little League Baseball. His contributions foster his love of sports and is infectious for the young students across a wide range of athletic, uh, sports. Chad Bartosik is not only a skilled coach and community leader, but also a highly qualified athletic administrator. He has all sorts of associations, um, professional. And at the end, I just want to conclude by saying the tenure of Chad Bartosik as Athletic Director for Salamaka City Schools would be a continuation of the excellence he has already brought to the position. His achievements in coaching, his commitment to the community, and his ability to inspire both athletes and colleagues are undeniable. Chad's leadership embodies the values of Salamaka Schools, of what it means to be a warrior. And his influence extends far beyond the playing field, positively impacting the lives of helpless students and families. Have I sufficiently embarrassed you?
Yeah.
So, and on top of that, he is probably one of the most humble people that you will run into. Right? I have worked with athletic directors that are half as successful with three times the ego. Um, and you know, he quietly works behind the scenes. He puts in tons of hours that aren't necessarily recognized. And he takes things very personally. And sometimes people might think, well, you don't wanna take things personally, but you take things personally because you genuinely care. And I look at that to his credit. So, by show. Speech?
Yeah. First, um, to the board, hoping for your approval. All right, it means a lot. I do not take it. So. Dr. Beeler, that was great. That was a wonderful recommendation and you're supporting that in some you know, interval. And you, you notice, you know, the the personal side of things, the way I operate, and I appreciate that. But I do take things, but you know, I have a lot of pride in this district, so. Um, I appreciate it. To my colleagues who are all around here and who provide laughter and fun on a daily basis, I, I couldn't do it without that part and, and thank you. You guys are all great. We hope, you know, make this, this school go around, but I'm just thankful to be in this position. I'm very proud of what we've, we've done over the last four years. Uh, I'm motivated, even though there's times that I lose motivation. There are people here to pick us up. We are, it's not always easy, right? We're, we're in this together. You know. I'm driven to continue to add on to what we've done. I think we are on the cusp of something great here and we're gonna continue to do it. Last but not least, when you take out a position like this, it becomes your life. So basically, I'm embedded into the community and I could not do that without the support of my wife. You're listening.
I don't believe so. There are a couple of people that have gotten permanent appointments, but we will congratulate them when we see them.
All right, well, congratulations to everybody who, um, received appointments or other, other, um, items under our personnel agenda. And number, item number eleven, our board information reports discussion. Uh, we have first reading of our, um, policy one to one old board members nomination election, first reading of policy thirty-four twenty. Non-discrimination and anti-harassment in the district. First reading of policy sixty-one twenty-one, sexual harassment in the workplace. Item D, our enrollment numbers for June twenty twenty-five, item U, Transportation Report from May twenty twenty-five. Item M, our capital project phase four summary report, number sixteen, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item G, a letter from Catararas and Wyoming County's Project Head Start. Which, I'm opening.
We have it printed if you like.
Do we wanna read it? All right, I'll read it. All right, so thi- this is a letter from, um, our Catararas and Wyoming County's Project Head Start. Um, it's just notifying the closure of the Salamaka Head Start Center. Uh, just letting the Salamaka School District know that. And I'll read it. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be a part of your community's journey. Our commitment to serving this community for many years has been a rewarding experience. And we value the trust you place in us. Thank you for allowing us to contribute to the growth and development of your community. It is with a heavy heart that I must share the difficult news of the Salamaka Head Start Center's closure at the end of this school year. Over the past several years, we have encountered numerous challenges together and it is with sadness that we say goodbye to this incredible community. Please know this decision was not made lightly and I genuinely appreciate the support and connection we've all built together during our time together. We've all built during our time together. The last day of UPK program at the Salamaka Head Start Center will be Wednesday, June eighteenth. And the last day for staff will be Friday, June twentieth. Uh, please contact Danny and more with any further questions. Sincerely. Um, and that's, that's kind of one of the things that I just want to touch on real quick. Um, we're so thankful that our capital project was a group that made for the vote. Uh, because this is one of the things that we've noticed in our community that there's a need for, you know, our childcare or youth services or even UPK. So with the capital project moving forward, hopefully this can possibly close the gap on some of the need that we have. Uh, Dr. Beeler, can we just touch on that real quick?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, the Capital Project vote on May twentieth, uh, provided us the opportunity to move forward with the development of, we're calling it an early childhood center. Um, well, maybe we'll come up with a much cooler name at some point in time. But our goal is to have, extend our services well below where we are right now. So right now we offer pre-K. We'd be looking to extend that into a pre-K three, so three-year-old programs. And then extend down into a two and one-year-old program. So, uh, it's very unfortunate that the Head Start has closed, uh, but we started to see several years ago and with the boards got we started to see several years ago and with the board's guidance have uh, taken the opportunity to move forward with filling in that particular gap as well as a couple others. And look forward to extending our ability to have an impact on the Salamaca community.
Thank you, appreciate that. Alright, um, we had our intermediate school year book, which was handed out to us this evening. We have it right here, we can't wait to come through it. Um, and then we had our upcoming events. Um, we have our June twelve pre-K recognition night. June thirteen, our senior walk. Uh, June fourteen, Cindy Moore five K. June sixteen, our moving up day at the high school. Uh, also June sixteen is kindergarten recognition night. Uh, June nineteenth, we have no school for Juneteenth recognition. June twenty-four, our next Board of Education meeting right here. Uh, June twenty-fifth, our senior parade to be held at five thirty. Uh, whoa, I'll give it what was written again?
Um, Dudley, Maine, Broad, down at Broad Avenue.
Okay, alright, so that's always a great event as well to see everybody in their cars and parading down Broad Street, so. Awesome event as well. Uh, June twenty-seventh, the highlight of the year, graduation. To be determined whether depending the track or indoors, so, um, yeah, June twenty-seventh, graduation. And that's it, anybody else, you have anything? Okay, so we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion. Motion by Tracy? Second by Dale? Any questions? All in favor? Hi, hi. Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. You know, this is one of the longest meetings that we've had in a while, but it's really important, so.